Doing roll call, all council members are present. Do we have any public comment? No public comments. Let's move on to our first order of business, E one, doing business with Isani update.
So this is an obligatory report to the council. Finance department twice per year goes through and looks at the vendors that we work with, or at least have worked with and might reasonably work with in the future. See if anybody's delinquent on her, basically owes any money, taxes, utilities, that kind of thing to the city. And then prescriptively by the two thousand nine resolution, we would not do business with them. In this instance, the only one we have outstanding that fits the bill is post office. So more information than anything is obviously I kind of need the post office, so.
They kind of have us over a barrel there, huh?
Yeah, and it's, it's one of those things where it's like if somebody's really behind on utilities or taxes, in the end, we're gonna get it one way or the other.
Yeah, right.
It's gonna end up on their taxes if they don't pay it at the end of the year, so. So informational, I'm obliged to report that, so.
Are they charged interest on that then? For late fees and stuff?
Yep, yep.
Kind of funny you mentioned that, because I got a letter in my mailbox saying that they won't deliver the mail because of the snow. They want, but they're not giving, so.
No, and they don't, they don't make a history, they don't make a, you know, they don't have a long history of being late by any means. So whatever happened the last few months is something else, but I'm not, I'm not terribly worried about it, so.
All right, E two, Isani indoor arena gutter discussion.
Okay, Mary Gordon, members of city council, this discussion on those gutters on the east side of Isani indoor arena. Snow and ice came off, took them gutters off the roof again. This year, it happened back in twenty nineteen, and at that time, the insurance covered it. And at that time, they said if it happened again, they would cover it again, but it became to be a continuing problem, we would need to do something about it. We're waiting here back to see what they're gonna say this year. We did ask if the money, if we didn't put gutters on the arena this year, if we could use, put an alternative system on there to keep this, or stop this from happening. One of the things we talked about last time was, we got a quote from Graybar, which is in front of you there, that is to install heat tape. And at that time, that quote there is for heat tape in the gutters, the downspouts, everything. So it wasn't just, that, just so you know, that's a fact quote there is, that's an updated quote for this year. Working with the architectural engineer, I think that was Woodseth, right, Woodseth? To find out what the best option is for that building and stop ice from happening, so. Open discussion, where would you like to go, is there something you would like to see, or?
I've seen heat tape work and not work.
Yeah, I don't know a lot about it. There would be an additional cost on that, because that is just the heat tape, there would be an additional cost to bring power from, basically have to go across the building. Because power right now is on the west side of the building, it'd have to go across the building. So I wasn't even get a quote of what it costs to bring power, but I did that, I believe that's two hundred and forty volts, so it ain't gonna be cheap.
Matt, could you please say what the amount was, please?
What's that?
How much was it?
I didn't get a quote on that, on what that power was gonna take to come across the building.
The heat tape, excuse me.
The heat tape was twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five.
Thank you.
Yep.
Plus then there'd be a yearly expense for electricity as well, so that's something that we need to consider.
That's, I don't know, I said you'd pay that, that's utility, right?
It'd be utility. Okay. Yep, less amps, yep.
So I mean, the insurance company, you're asking them right now and seeing if they'll give us the money, basically, that would have cost to replace and then we can put it toward, yeah, right.
So what's the standard gutter cost? Do you remember what that cost last time?
It was, it was at least forty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
It might have been closer to sixty, but it was at least forty-nine.
Yeah, we had.
It was not cheap.
It wasn't cheap, and we had a very, very, very hard time getting anybody to quote on it, we got one quote. It took forever to get the gutter material at that time, and that was back in twenty nineteen, so I can't imagine now, the way it takes to get stuff, it's, it's not anytime soon if we wanted to put gutters back on there.
So this would be in addition to the gutter cost, correct? Because you have to put new gutters in, in addition to the heat tape? Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
If insurance did pay for it, we'd pay our deductible for insurance and then have to pay for the heat tape. So our deductible is typically a thousand dollars.
Okay.
If insurance does say they're gonna cover.
But they're only probably gonna cover the replacement of the.
Replacement of the gutters.
Of the gutters, not this project here, right?
Unless you're lucky.
Because they said they were, if it's gonna be, be a continuous problem.
Yeah, right, right.
Do it again, so then next thing you know, you're dropping insurance, and now you're looking for insurance. Now you're, when you do that, you're paying more for insurance.
It's somewhat of a poor design as well, because the water on the upper roof comes down and it drops right on the lower roof. It doesn't go through a downspout all the way in, or all the way down the building into the gutter. So water coming down the building is wanting to freeze the whole way down until it gets down to the bottom. It's just, it's designed, little bit of design flaw. Should have gutters, the downspout should go all the way down the building to the gutter.
I mean, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that set of building, does it have to have a gutter?
I'm, I think that's.
Sorry, and that was when I, when I met with, when Matt and Jordan and I all met with Woodseth, Mike England at Woodseth, he was a guy we worked with at the liquor store project. Basically, the instruction to him was, I just want the correct answer. Like, if your answer is take the dang gutters off and be done with it, that's fine, I'll pay you for your time and your mileage, let's move on with life. But if that's not the correct answer, I want the correct answer, not, just, because this, obviously, this can't keep happening, we're gonna end up in a bad spot, we're gonna have to choose whether we're gonna have insurance on that or not. And that's not gonna work either, so we'll, we'll see what he says on that. But he's got the, he's got the, the plan set for the building, so he can see what insulation is currently in there, all those types of things. And so we'll get some kind of an answer, and the answer may very well be get rid of the gutters, so.
Yeah, remember, two thousand nineteen to now, but two thousand nineteen, we didn't have the greatest winter either again. And this is an unpredictable winter, because we had snow, freeze, rain, freeze, snow. It's, it, you know, now today, rained all flipping day. I mean, roads, I must have seen forty accidents this morning. I mean, their roads are horrible, and they weren't bad, but in areas they were. So it's, this is not a typical winter. This is stuff we got today, grain scoop full of snow, weighed as much as a five gallon bucket of water. So I mean, this is really wet snow. Now, now we're talking snowstorm or rain Wednesday night, tomorrow night. It's just gonna freeze on top of it, so now we're having another more nightmare, and it's, you know, ice dams are a big problem on everybody's homes this year because of this weather.
So is this, is it the, more or the less the sliding of the snow taking out the gutters?
It's, yes, it, it.
More than it is the ice buildup?
Well, the ice gets to be really hanging there a lot, it gets really, a lot of ice there. Back in twenty nineteen, we were watching it, and I think in that time, we had the ice dam removed, and then it still came off and took the gutters off after the fact. So it's a little bit of a wind tunnel there as well, the wind, the snow likes to pile up there, it's just everything involved, it's just, it's kind of funky, but the ice does hang on them gutters a lot.
I guess I'd like to see no gutters if it's possible, I mean, usually gutters are just to keep whatever's underneath it from getting wet, correct? I mean, is there a lot of pedestrians or users on that side?
To divert, divert the water away from.
Does it go into, does it go into the drain tile then?
So you don't have.
There's, on that side of the building is.
Ponds.
Ponds.
Rain garden.
Rain garden.
Rain garden, which is there to use.
Yep.
But then there's also cement slab in one area, and sidewalks, and exit doors and overhead doors and entrance doors.
And then if you know I'm rain gathering, you got sidewalks, and all that rain come, moisture comes down, freezes on the sidewalk, and then you end up.
Correct, yep.
So if one, one person falling and breaking a hip, it could be a hell of a lot cheaper, it could be, this is a hell of a lot cheaper than that issue.
They don't, they don't use those doors a lot in winter, but in the summer, obviously, they're, when it's nice out, all them doors are open if it's raining. If you don't have gutters to divert the water, I don't know what kind of problem it'll be.
Sure.
Well, it sounds to me like we're kind of waiting to hear back at this point, I mean, it's, you know, just more for discussion, I guess, at the moment. But I guess I'd rather wait to make a decision unless you need a decision now, but, you know, I mean, it's only here back.
More to just keep you, more to just keep the council in the loop as to what's happening, yep.
Maybe you can step up and give us your opinion on maybe possibly not having gutters, or?
So, Jay Wilson, I'm the association board president at Rummer BMX. We don't use those doors a lot in the winter time. Most of the traffic comes through the entrance that's on the north side of the building or on the west side of the building. There was an issue last weekend with some ice coming off the roof on the west side of the building. There was a huge icicle, and I'm not, I'm talking like an eighteen foot tall icicle that came down right in front of that entry door that's on the west side. And ice scooped probably fifty pounds of ice off the sidewalk from that icicle that came off the roof. So that, there's a safety concern there on that side. The gutters, I'm not a rain management expert, I don't know what kind of impact that's gonna have on the, the rain garden on that side. So I'm gonna leave that up to, you know, the city and whatever you guys determine on that. I'm, I'm more concerned with the ice that was coming off of the building on the west side. There's no overhang at all over that entry door, so whatever comes off the roof just falls right in front of the door. And the lady looked like she had seen a ghost, because this huge chunk of ice fell right in front of her, it was like out of a horror movie. So nobody was hurt, thankfully, but I ended up going out there and making snowballs to throw at some of the other ones, and I got them to come down that way. But that, that's my main concern at the time, at the moment, so.
Maybe add something else we could look at too, is a little canopy over that. West entry door.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of any ice came off that side of the building, if there's any more icicles up there, we can definitely knock those down.
Yeah, and I, I mean, with the, the weather cycle, it's been this crazy this past week, I don't know, there was a lot of ice on Sunday, but I haven't been out there this week yet, so.
Okay, we'll get it checked out.
That's not even the side of the building we're having issues with, is.
Yep, no issues, we wasn't aware of any issues on that side of the roof.
Yeah.
Hey Matt, what's the, what's the insulation like in that ceiling?
I, I didn't look at the plans, I don't know how much insulation is in there. I know that that roof has had different leaks, we've had people up to find out where the roof is leaking at. I know in twenty nineteen, when they had the ice built up, we had water coming inside the roof at that time because of the ice dam. I'm not sure how much insulation is in there, have no idea.
That's a key thing for us to start with, that's where it usually starts, is if there's not enough insulation or a proper airflow, so that it does freeze like that and creates the ice dam thawing, freeze, thawing, freeze.
Yeah.
And you know, when you look at it, it's, you know, forty degrees during the day, and then all of a sudden it's five degrees at night, and everything freezes.
Yeah.
And I know with the, with the roof potentially being replaced pretty tight, or sometime soon, if there could be a, maybe a complete redesign of, you know, to fix some of the issues.
Yeah, it's almost, yeah, it's almost impossible to find where the roof is leaking, it's all screwed down, and it could be any one of ten thousand screws, it's dripping a little bit, and then following someplace to where it just drips out, so.
Do you know if that's a hot roof or is it vented?
Is the roof vented?
Oh, so there's no vents, so it's a hot roof?
It's, well, there's.
I don't believe there is any vents.
No, the venting basically is on the north and south of the airflow that goes through.
Yeah, there's big air chaters on each, on the north and south side of the building that move a bunch of air.
Okay.
Because you got the steel structure up there, and then basically insulation and then poly, that's, that's your ceiling.
Because I know on, on houses and stuff, to keep it from ice damming, you have to have an inch and a half gap, the whole, basically, I mean, a cer- a sufficient amount of airflow, otherwise you get a hot roof and you get ice damming like that. So I don't know if it'd be better to look into a long-term option for actual venting versus just depending on, you know, the little ridges and the metal? Because insulation, when you push it up in there, it'll push up and fill all those ridges. So if somebody put in, say, twelve inch insulation in a ten inch space, then that insulation's gonna push up, you're not gonna have any venting, and your roof is gonna ice dam like that. So I mean, maybe the gutters isn't the problem, maybe the insulation or the venting is.
I believe that is something we did share with Woodseth, Woodseth's gonna look and, look into that as well.
Yeah, he, he noted the, the specs on the insulation immediately after we sent that over, and he noted that it was interesting.
Okay.
So he's, he's looking into it, and he, he understands clearly that we're looking for a final solution, not a.
Okay.
Not a Band-Aid, not a two-year solution, it's a, a permanent solution, so. Whether or not we, you know, have the means to go forward or want to or whatever, but he will, he, he understands the instruction.
Any more discussion at all, or go just kind of wait until, see what, come up with? All right, moving on to E three, discussion to modify maximum sizes of accessory structures in residential zoning districts.
All right, so a little bit of background, we brought this to the planning commission in December. We brought the exterior materials, and then further discussion led to sizing of accessory structures and what should be allowed, what could be allowed. And then just more research that we had to do, so that, that's why we're here at the COW meeting, to kind of show you some diagrams, different charts that we did. Just to show you potential things that we can do here. So the definition in our zoning ordinances is a subordinate attached or detached building located on the same lot as the principal building, of which the use is incidental and accessory to the use of the principal building. So most of the time, these are sheds, either garden sheds, garages, other buildings that people do stuff in.
All right, I want to, I'll just real quick, now are you talking about structures with cement floors?
Yep, it would include garden sheds without them, garages with cement floors, permanent structures.
Basically total square footage of all buildings.
Yes.
Whether they're four by four chicken coop or a twenty-four by twenty-four garage on a slab.
Yeah, I'll kind of get into that a little bit here in another slide. So the maximum allowable sizes of accessory structures, like I said, were discussed at the last meeting. Me, Josie, Stephanie, Jason, Matt Small, we all met several times discussing different sizing, what other cities do. So we're gonna kind of show you what Cambridge and East Bethel have for their charts. And then also, it was suggested to look up and see if, just getting rid of the charts would be an option, and maybe going with a forty percent impervious surface per parcel, meaning everything, including the house, driveway, sidewalks, patios, would all be included so that they can't surpass that forty percent of the total lot surface. And then we have a couple drawings here in a couple slides that'll show that on different sized lots. Just thought I'd put in the impervious surface definition as well. And it's anything where water cannot readily penetrate the soil as an artificial or natural surface, which water, air, roots cannot penetrate. Examples, like I said, concrete patios, walkways, driveways, sheds, pools, concrete and asphalt pads, and of course, buildings. So here's currently what we have for our table for accessory structures. So any parcel less than an acre in size would be allowed up to a five hundred eighty foot maximum square foot for their accessory structure. And then as it increment, incrementally gets larger, as the parcel sizes get larger, you can also have two accessory structures, as long as the second one is a hundred and seventy square feet or less. So that's kind of what you were asking, if you just had a chicken coop or something. We don't necessarily count those unless they're really big, just because it wouldn't affect impervious too much, but. So a majority of the parcels are under an acre in size, so they would be in that five eighty mark. And then another thing to point out is setbacks for these structures are determined by the zoning district. So it's usually five or ten feet, depending on how big the lot size is. And then I'll go to surrounding cities, this is Cambridge's chart, so they kind of split it up by one residential zoning district. They can go larger when they get over two acres. They do have larger increments than we do. I think it's good to have what we have right now, just because less than two acres is gonna be such a big percentage of the parcels that are in Isani. So it, we're kind of trying to tailor towards, you know, more people being able to have larger stuff. If we did the two acre thing, then they would be at five, at the five eighty mark too. But theirs is a little larger at a thousand square feet is what they start at, so. And I did discuss this with our building official too, he used to work at the city of Cambridge, and this is correct, he said that it was based on the building code. Something about the one thousand square foot mark was kind of the benchmark, so.
That's for any two acres or less?
Yes. Yeah, I had to double check with them, because it's, it's a lot.
So if you got like a point two five acre, you could build a fifty by fifty garage in the backyard?
Actually, they have a rule that says at the bottom there, or the total square footage of the floor area of the principals. So you can't have accessory building larger than your house, is basically what that's saying. So that's something that we can implement too, if you guys like that.
So that would, I mean, probably a lot of your houses are around, anywhere between eight hundred and say, on average, fourteen hundred? Is that what they would?
The average house, the square footage.
About twelve hundred, I'd say.
The footprint.
Square foot.
Yeah.
That's on the average house. My house is, mine's like twelve hundred square, so I could put a whole, another building in my yard.
A fifty by fifty?
Yeah, I would have a shed that's as big as my.
Thousand square feet?
Fifty by twenty is a thousand square feet, fifty by fifty is two hundred and five hundred.
So like, yeah, I mean, like it, right now.
A four car garage.
Twenty-four by twenty-four is five hundred and seventy-six square feet. That's what it's at right now.
And that's kind of consistent with East Bethel as well, is what we're seeing. They do have, they break it down by every quarter acre, which seems a little excessive. There's, this goes on for another page on their ordinances, so it goes up, I don't know what that is, a hundred six, a hundred and forty square feet every quarter acre. That, that's getting to be too much, yeah, picking out a category there. But then also, as you see, they have that maximum number of detached structures. It goes from one to two there at the four acre mark, and then, like I said, it keeps going, and it goes up to three or four, I believe, when you get to the larger acreage. So here's a chart that staff kind of came up with, that kind of implements a little bit of both of Cambridge and East Bethel there. So you got the breakdown of the zoning districts in the residential area. As you can see, the R one A and R one tier one, those are our larger parcels. So we believe that it makes sense to kind of up those numbers a little bit from what they're currently at. Just based on what's surrounding those zoning districts as well. Usually when you get into like the R three B and stuff like that, they're surrounded by commercial, industrial, other, other things that would be factored into that. So we did add that column for maximum number of detached structures, that's not like set in stone or anything, that's just something that we could do, if you guys like that. We could leave it in, if not, take it out, looking for a little bit of discussion on that.
I mean, they're still gonna have to meet setbacks regardless of, if it takes up their whole backyard or not, they still gotta meet the setbacks.
Yep, stay out of an easement, meet the setbacks, things like that, yep.
That's what any accessory building really.
And then. Yeah, so what we did was we incrementally went just the next step from what it's currently at. So as you can see, the nine sixties pulled from the one to two acre, that's now in the one, less than an acre. R one A is every par, any parcel over an acre in the city. So that's already, that nine sixty mark is kind of irrelevant, so it'd pretty much start at twelve hundred. And go up by six hundred from there, if you guys have other suggestions, it's a good time to talk about that as well.
So anything less, like, for example, my lot, I think it's like point three eight or something like that.
Yeah, so we kept that side the same, if you guys wanted to change those numbers, that's up for discussion.
I did just want to mention, we did have a, we did ask Jason for, and I know it's in the materials here, but when we looked further into the forty percent of impervious surface area, we wanted to make sure that our systems could handle that amount of runoff if every parcel did use that much of their lot. And Jason, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little more into that since you're the expert, but, which is why we based our numbers on what we did, so.
Yeah, I guess, I think the slide's still coming here, but yeah, essentially, standard modeling doesn't actually have that forty percent impervious be included as a default, because in, on an average larger lot, there isn't that much impervious, so we don't want to oversize our system. We want to size our system to handle whatever actual runoff would be anticipated. So like a two acre lot, if you see on this slide here, modeling software pretty much is saying the average two acre lot only has twelve percent impervious, so that's what modeling would have been done to size the storm sewer system and how many catch basins and all that. So, so if we tried to go higher than, than those percentages, we'd be having to keep our eye on whether we're causing any kind of runoff problems, you know, flooding on the street, overflowing storm systems. You know, if everybody, or you know, a majority start to try and go beyond that, that number.
Which realistically, not a large majority is probably gonna go over that number, if, if any.
That's also intended a lot, but my house sits up in the hill. The only, it's gonna run off from my, from my lot into the street, and what goes on my driveway. The rest is gonna saturate in the ground, or it's gonna run into the backyard.
Yep, yeah, it'd be site specific, yep, each, each scenario, you know, be different.
You know, and I do have rain gutters, so in most of that, all gets diverted to the back, to the house.
Yeah, so a little further explanation of that, we kind of did, we pulled a couple surveys, this one is kind of like your typical rectangular lot, it's on Eagle Street. So as you can see, it's already at thirty percent impervious, just with the house, garage, sidewalk, driveway, patio area. The yellow, red, and green boxes in the corners are representing different maximum sizes in different scenarios. That red box is the current maximum allowable size, so a twenty-four by twenty-four shattered garage. That thirty by thirty would be if they were able to go up to that forty percent impervious surface limit. And then that green box is Jason's calculations for a three hundred and seventy-three square foot engineered, what, what the infrastructure can handle if each lot did that. So we'll leave that at that. And then, as you can see, this next one, when the parcel size gets a little bigger, the yellow square gets significantly larger. It's only at eight point seven percent impervious with the house, garage, driveway, et cetera. Obviously, somebody's not gonna. Obviously, somebody's not gonna build a ten thousand square foot building, but you never know. Uh, the green, the forty by fifty is Jason's engineered, um, calculations, and then that twenty-four by twenty-four would be, what they can have, since it's still under an acre, it's point seven seven acres. Um, but this just shows that when you extend that backyard, um, even, even by, uh, you know, a quarter to a half acre, um, that forty percent limit, uh, can get pretty big. So that's what those numbers represent there.
And I guess for me personally, that's where I'd like to see a change, because I know some of the older lots are one to three acres in town. And I mean, you have so much impervious surface to only be able to build a nine hundred sixty square foot garage, which is pretty much next to nothing for a garage, is kind of, it seems a little low when you have all that cap- all that extra impervious surface compared to, you know, a half acre, a quarter acre lot. So I think, I don't know, I like, I like the forty percent. I mean, I get it, it's kind of different, but I think it'd be better for the residents in the long run.
Like majority of the lots, if you want the forty percent, you know.
So, no.
We would.
No, that's not true. If you go back a slide.
We would also need to think ahead if we did go up to the forty percent, what would our requirements be for future developments? Because it would really change our modeling for those developments if we know we're going to be allowing large or more impervious.
Builders will have to provide more property for ponds.
Well, the infrastructure would have to be upsized substantially, so it'd be far more expensive for developers.
So Steve, you're, you're mistaken on what that graph is.
That green, that green box is what Jason said, that's all they could handle, the infrastructure.
Well, he said the thirty by thirty would give them the forty percent.
But then also, you gotta look at, the infrastructure is only gonna handle the green box.
Yeah, if every single house were to build a forty, correct. I mean, that's not how it's laid out, but.
Right now, the red box is twenty-four by twenty-four, that's what we currently allow.
Yep.
And then, and then the order of forty percent. Be if every, every home did, you know, did, built something nineteen by nineteen. Not if, like, not if every home was forty percent, but if every home built something.
On average of nineteen by nineteen.
Nineteen by nineteen is the average, what the system could handle, right? And thirty by thirty would be the forty percent of what I'm talking about, so.
Which is, that's how we came to the numbers and the chart that we recommend, because it's in the middle of both, and we think fair for our residents, and also would prevent, um, from the larger lot, the dwarfing of houses next door. If you have this huge shed next door to you, you, it, it definitely impacts your neighbors.
So is, is staff hearing, what I'm hearing is that council, maybe a majority of you like what you see, what's proposed by staff for the R one A and the R one tier one district, those higher numbers. But what you're also wanting to see is an increase in the residential developments that have those smaller lots that are not in the R one A tier one. Is that what we're hearing? We want that to be increased as well?
Cause right now, it's, it's.
It stayed the same.
Five eighty.
The five eighty, the nine sixty, yep.
Majority of lots will stay the same.
Yeah, so is what we're hearing is that you want staff to do more calculations on what's the highest number that can be taken into account, Jason's information in between there, maybe on the forty percent on the residential, all residential lots?
I guess I just.
Depends on the lots.
It does, like, the, the lots.
I can't, if I, say I built a twenty-four by twenty-four in my backyard, it'd be great, cause I'd have a lot less to mow, but, um, that actually, the way my lot is shaped and the width and everything, that's, that's the max that I probably would ever consider building. That's me, that's, that's just me. But if someone has the same square footage lot and it's shaped a little different, they might be able to do a, you know, a twenty-four by twenty-six or twenty-four by thirty, you know, it's just.
There's a lot to consider, and with this proposed ordinance change, as well as the next one that we'll be discussing, we're not looking for final direction this evening. We wanna share with you a lot of information, cause this impacts other sections within zoning code as well. So we still have more research, we just need to know the direction to keep on the, the track of diving in deeper to this. So we're not looking on, is this a pass, you know, fail right now, but what else should we look into as we, um, go further into this?
I, I personally like forty percent impervious surface applied to every parcel. You know, I don't think there should be a limit on the number of structures that we allow. The sidewall height, I don't know, I guess, is fourteen foot. I mean, as far as a house that we have in town is fourteen foot, the max size of the height of house.
That is actually the specifications that, um, would be allowed without hiring an engineer, so we wanted to make it.
For building code.
Building code, um, so engineering would be required for any sidewall height higher than fourteen.
Fourteen was the highest of any, any of the towns we do want that fourteen.
And counties, often.
East Bethel has fourteen. Um, I don't think Cambridge says it in this chart, but.
Once you get a lot, once you get higher than that, cause it still has to be wood structure, it can't be a full barn, you know, so. Once you get higher than fourteen, you're, for like an accessory building.
Is there a, a maximum roof height on that? I know at the, one of the last meetings, it was said that there was a twelve foot maximum roof height with a ten foot sidewall, that wouldn't give you enough pitch, so. If that was what was said, I don't know if it's correct, but is there a maximum roof height on that? I mean, if you have a fourteen foot sidewall, and then depending on the size, say if you have a, you know, a twenty-four foot total roof height to get your appropriate pitch, is there a, any sort of stipulation on that? Cause I don't think we'd want a super tall building in town.
The roof height is gonna depend on the span.
Yeah, correct.
And that's gotta be engineered.
Correct.
That no matter what, trusses are gonna be engineered, you can't throw more two by fours than that.
Yep.
I see what you're saying.
Yep.
We, we did not.
We don't have to have an engineer inside the building, but your trusses will have to be engineered.
We did not add a, because of building sizing, um, we did not add a maximum height for, but that is something we can impose.
Right.
We do have.
Look at, like, if you wanna put attic trusses up there, for example. You know, they're, you know, it's gonna increase the.
It's neither gonna be the roof, you're gonna put attic trusses up there. But if you have a fourth wall pitch, it's gonna be shorter, if there's a whole form of calculation that you gotta do. But no matter what, those trusses have to be engineered, there's no way you can get around that.
I understand that, but I mean, you could build a fourteen foot sidewall building and then have a, the steepest pitch roof in the world and build yourself a thirty-five foot tall building, and you have a second floor and everything in there, so I don't know if we should put something on that, because it is residential, I mean, you don't want a thirty-five foot tall garage.
Wasn't it before, just could be taller than the house?
Yeah, that would make, that would make sense too.
Than your primary structure.
Okay. I mean, I guess.
That would likely be removed if we're allowing these bigger structures, cause you wouldn't gain that, uh, the height that you need if you still kept that language in there, that would be revised.
Okay.
So you would have potential for accessory structures to dwarf the house, because otherwise you wouldn't get that pitch if we're allowing such a large building.
Unless we put on a, a specific maximum pitch or something, I don't, I don't know, I would just.
But then, yeah, you could, take your biggest building that you wanna have and give that height on that. I think that we'd have to work with engineering on that. The other thing is, is if the direction's also to look more into this forty percent impervious surface, I would request that we ask Jason to look more further into those engineering numbers on what it would cost, the potential impact to a developer to upsize that stormwater system, so all that piping infrastructure, um, if they were all, cause we have to go based on worst case scenario when we're designing standards of building, and if we were to change the standard of that stormwater system, how could that cost impact a developer for like a development we already had, like, do a, here's how it is now, here's if we change the standard? I think we could bring that back as well.
If you can go back to the slide that showed, I think it was like a two acre, that one there. So that, that is basically telling you that our stormwater, that that two acre lot or one acre, what is that, a one acre? Point seven seven acres, so that point seven seven acres, the green box is how much, basically how much stormwater's running off of that house, correct? Or how much that lot gives the system, or how does, I mean.
That's how much the system can handle.
Right, so I mean, you have, you have a bigger lot is gonna absorb more water, correct? So why shouldn't a bigger lot be allowed to build a bigger structure? Like, say if you have a, if you have a two acre lot, and you're only allowed to build a nine hundred sixty square foot building, but your, your property is, you know, draining enough water for everybody to account for a ten thousand square foot building, why should you be limited to nine sixty?
With the forty percent, you wouldn't be.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, I support the forty percent, say on like lots over an acre or something like that, because, I mean, nobody's gonna build a ten thousand square foot building, and it's, it's not fair that, say if one neighbor has a two acre lot, and then there's another neighbor that has a half acre lot, and they're basically allowed to build the same sized structure, even though the one absorbs way more water than the other.
I, I.
Flip to the, uh, the slide that, yeah, this one, I guess it's hard to read, it's in your packet as well, but that bottom corner of that slide, uh, has the area of building that would fit on each parcel size that the software generates. Um, and so if you see how big those square footages actually are on those bigger lots, they're capable of significantly bigger on the bigger lots than the, you know, than the, than the buildings that we're calling out right now. Um, so those could go bigger without a problem. It's the smaller ones that, you know, are, are where we get restricted, because they're already shoe horning in a house, and then.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so this green, you know, the small lot is the only time the stormwater thing is actually kind of calling out a slightly smaller old building. The second you get above the third acre lot, I think, then hydraulically, you can go bigger, um, than, than the sizes that we currently have called out.
So I guess if you go back to that slide that you were just on, um, no, back one, that one. So I mean, say, say if I have a one acre lot, which I do, so, and your system is accounting for twenty percent, or it has twenty percent ability to drain that lot, is what the, the calculations say. So that's almost five thousand square feet, so why should, why should someone with a one acre lot be limited nine hundred sixty square feet of building when right there the math says almost five thousand? I, I get what you're saying with the smaller lots, they don't, they can't drain as much, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's, it's somebody's lot. They pay for it, they maintain it. I mean, I, I guess I don't understand why nine sixty is the maximum on a one acre lot, when you say the system.
Those numbers on there, excuse me, council member, um, Merrill, those include the house, it's all impervious on the lot, not just accessory shed.
Okay. But even still.
I think we, we also need to consider that we might not think that anyone would build a ten thousand square foot shed, but there is always special cases where there are people who can afford it and will, and will possibly have an auto shop then on their property, um, which isn't an allowed home occupation right now, so, um, we have to consider things like that too, when we're allowing much larger accessory buildings. And whether or not that's something you are okay with.
I mean, right now, our current number is forty percent, right? So I mean, for impervious surface, so I mean, somebody could potentially would build a massive house that, and, and their driveway that takes up the forty percent. And the developers that we've had come in have chosen not to do that. So I mean, we're already allowing up to forty percent, and we didn't take into consideration at that time their stormwater situation or anything like that, so I mean, we're already, we're already made that decision, so we're not really changing anything that the developers could potentially do, other than saying, we're gonna allow you to build a shed to the size of the forty percent. We're, we're already doing the forty percent. So I mean, all these developers could come in and take every lot and build a house and driveway that's forty percent right now. They could, and they, they haven't done that, and.
Forty percent though is determined by the council a couple years ago.
Right, yeah.
It's made up.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not.
I'm the one that made it up.
Engineered, so. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but.
So it's not the developers who.
But I'm just saying, it, since we've done that change, it has not changed what the developers are doing, it's, you know.
I guess, just to add one last piece, uh, current developments, we've been getting the, you know, the third acre to a quarter acre lots, which actually are getting maxed out, you know.
Are they getting pretty close, yeah?
I mean, that's why his diagram of my, of the hydraulics on that quarter acre lot figure is, you know.
Thirty.
Thirty some odd percent off the bat, so if we're holding them to the forty, they're restricted, and now they have to go smaller than what we even have called out, um, for, for these quarter acre lots at least.
Well, even in that example, you're going thirty by thirty, so you're bigger than what it would be now, cause right now it'd be only a five eighty, right?
Five sixty.
Five eighty. Yeah.
Mayor, if I may interrupt for just a moment, I just wanna remind, um, the committee that we only go until six P M., we have one more item. Um, there are two options, one is that if you could concise what you'd like staff to look into further on this item, and we will be bringing it back to the next committee of the whole meeting with more information for you. Um, or if there was interest, you could recess committee of the whole to convene, reconvene after the city council meeting this evening. Um, but with planning commission coming at six P M., I would recommend that we move on to the next item after you give staff some direction, what else to look into at this time.
I have no problem with forty percent.
And that's, that's where I'm at too, I think, yeah.
I think, I think we're staying, I think we're just fine at the forty percent.
I mean, is.
See that being an issue, I mean, if it's already called out, there isn't a lot we gotta change.
Yeah, right, I think it just makes it simple and easy and.
And I think if someone, I, you know, I think, I, I had to apply for a variance the first house I built in Isani, and, but at that time, I didn't have to prove that. I, I was a hardship. I just had to basically get the signature from my neighbor approving it, and then come before planning commission, getting them approve it, and then went for council to be approved.
I don't always necessarily believe that we have to have hardship for everything, because hardship is such a fine line.
It's a gray area.
It's a very gray area. I, I have said this, Dan has heard me.
Case by case.
Dan has heard me say this million times. We've had all these discussions on fences, being in the right way, blah, blah, blah. Hey, come up here, talk to us. If that makes sense, I have absolutely zero problem working it. Without having us to change codes, which is making more work for our staff, which is causing more financial endure, rather than them coming in here and asking us. That's why, I'm not a big fan of changing our codes. I have no problem, come in, talk. Nine, nine times out of ten, I'm not gonna have a problem with what you're doing.
So the tricky thing with that, council member and mayor and councils, is those are set by state statute, the hardship or what was practical difficulties and five of these requirements. That's when you have cities, local governments having to conform to what is decided above us that we have to do. And we have to have facts of finding and things like that, it makes our job even more tricky, cause we don't have the discretion to just say, hey, we find that this is okay. We don't have that, it gets, it got removed from us when the state said this is what you have to meet. That's the challenging thing on that. But, um, going back to that forty percent for the impervious surface, are we interested in doing that for all residential? Residential R one A and tier one districts, correct?
That's what I would like, yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking just the bigger lots, because otherwise, wouldn't the forty percent on the really small lots, would that limit their garage size even smaller? Okay.
It'd be the same as it is.
For the garages even?
Yep.
Mayor, council, I think we should do modeling on forty percent for all.
Well, it's gonna look bad on modeling.
Well, I, to present it, and staff will have something to work on, we'll have a little bit more discussions with engineering on that and bring that back.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Moving on to E four, discussion to allow larger commercial vehicles in residential areas.
So staff has looked into, was asked to look into chapter two twenty-seven, and the regulations that prohibit vehicles over fifteen thousand, um, gross vehicle weight rating. Uh, this started with a discussion regarding larger units such as buses or commercial, um, work trucks and things like that. So what I included in your packet in their memo is what our current city code states in chapter two twenty-seven. This has got the purpose, which, that was set in, I would say, greater than ten years ago. Even when staff had looked at revising two twenty-seven before, we never touched the language which you see in D, which says that large, excessively large commercial vehicles and equipment in residential areas has detrimental and blighting impacts upon the residential quality and character of such neighborhoods, and continues on. That was, um, set by the council prior to you, and many before you maybe. Um, so that would be some language to look into, if that is no longer the desire of the current council, that should be evaluated, that language. Also that should be evaluated is we do require screening, um, to see if that's something that we still would require if you have larger, uh, units parked within the yard. Uh, should the gross vehicle weight rating in residential areas be increased? So I think that we could go up to what is the standard of our streets, um, for weight restrictions, which most of our streets are rated for seven ton, um, so we, per axle, so we could go up to a gross vehicle weight rating on that. The only caveat with that is during weight restriction times for fall and spring, it goes down to five ton. So perhaps you wanna make the ceiling be five tons, so as not to have to have P D try to regulate vehicles on certain times of year, um, which could be very tricky, um, because you have to be watching when the state puts on those road restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. Also for discussion is, do we wanna allow? Um, also for discussion is, do we wanna allow, um, all large units, commercial units that go up to that rating level? And this would be things such as the bus, box truck, boom trucks, dump truck, tank truck, construction equipment, semi trailers, tractors, um, large repair trucks, et cetera. Uh, if council desired to only allow certain vehicles, um, such as the passenger bus, we could do as simple as a exception for certain things if you didn't wanna allow everything.
That's what, I wanna interrupt you, but I know we did, we had this conversation, and I think Dan was on council at the time and that was prior to you.
We raised the, raised it up to.
We raised that at one time. Now, if that didn't get changed, I don't know why it didn't.
The fifteen thousand?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, cause it was, it was.
A near rim or, it was a discussion.
Way less near rim.
Thought I was on when we did that.
No, that was long before that.
It was long, yeah.
There was a gentleman, he lives in town, he drives semi for a living, he's, and this was part of the discussion. Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of people's driveways aren't rated for those large trucks, okay? We're doing them a justice by not putting that heavy load on their asphalt that they have. This particular gentleman drives semi, he's on two acres of land, he has an eight inch thick concrete slab. You can't even see his truck, that's what's, you remember that conversation?
Yeah.
And that was part of it. The next stipulation was we allowed the box trucks as so long as they weren't impeding on the roadway or the sidewalk, they couldn't extend past the sidewalk. They couldn't, they, they, they had to be up in their driveway and could not impede the sidewalk.
We have that for roll offs, that's currently in there, you have to be ten feet into your driveway past that.
But it was also for box trucks, that's, that was, that, I'll tell you, this thing, this, that meeting, I think that lasted six months.
I, I remember that too.
That was a long time, that was a long discussion, that goes back in the days with the signage, signs on properties. That's can of worms, can of worms, can of worms.
We did end up raising it so you could have a tractor parked in your driveway.
Parked a tractor in the yard, that was discussed, a day, day cab type tractor, type.
So, I, I have a question on this, you said the axle weight limit on the roads was, was that five, what was the weight limit in the winter? Or spring and fall, sorry?
Spring and fall is five ton.
So is that on all city streets?
Yes, except for the county ones that are notated, like we have some within town that are seven or nine ton.
Okay, I have full loaded, uh, semi trucks going past my house every, every couple of days going down to a business, uh, spring, fall, I mean.
It all depends on what they have in there for, um, what they're hauling. So a lot of times you'll still, you'll still see concrete, but you may see another axle added. You'll still see dump trucks, but instead of putting ten ton in there, they're putting five ton, so to say, or they're limiting their loads and you see more trucks with smaller loads during those times. You still will see them, they're all still fine, but they're spread out, so you'll see probably more of them.
Okay, so is this, are we, are we just discussing the parking of these vehicles or the driving of them? Because a lot of people that drive commercial vehicles would park them in their own yard. I mean, at that point, can we really restrict them, that, tell them that they can't park, I mean, I, I guess.
The, the city can choose to restrict them from parking in their own driveway, that's what's in city code, to be enforceable, it has to be in city code cause we're telling someone else what you can do on your property to meet city standards. Um, so to say, but yeah, this full discussion is all about what do we want to allow people to park in their driveway?
I mean, it's their property.
What, I guess what, what brought up the discussion, what needs to be changed?
Uh, the mayor brought it up because he had a request from, um, someone who had a bus in their driveway or wanted to have a bus in their driveway.
Was it under fifteen thousand pounds?
That was twenty-six, no, it was twenty-six thousand.
And my neighbor.
A bus that weighs twenty-nine five.
Cause it's the rating, you have to go on the rating.
A school bus. Like a bluebird, my neighbor has one too and we don't care, I mean, he drives in our driveway to park his blue, his bus. I mean, people use buses and big campers all the time, I don't think we should restrict anybody on what they have in their own yard, I mean, that's kinda.
Well, that's one of the reasons I wanted to bring this up is, cause, and it, when we talk about these kinda things, it's like, well, what are we actually doing in practice? You know, like what's actually out there? Well, there's all kinds of things that are out there that are actually not within the rules, but nobody complains about it, so. So I think, you know, then when somebody decides, oh, well now I'm tired of that after it's been sitting there for four months, then, then they call and complain and it's like, well, why weren't you, what was wrong four months ago? You know, so I mean, it's just, it's, uh, I think we should, we wanna adjust these things so that what we're doing in practice is allowed, you know, I think.
Yeah, and.
It already is that way, it's just somebody gets upset about something and then they complain, you know, so.
I guess I wouldn't have a problem if the neighbors don't complain about it, I wouldn't have a problem if it doesn't impede on the sidewalk or the street or visibility because you know as well as I do, some kid's gonna come running out, it may not be your kid, it may be kid a block over. Comes running out, a car comes flying down the street, you know, we cannot stop people from speeding. It becomes a safety issue, then it's an issue. I have no problem with that, but then I don't wanna have somebody come up and say, well, my driveway's shot now because I've been parking this overloaded vehicle on a driveway that's rated. Jason, what's normal driveways rated for?
Probably more like a three ton design.
Yeah, I mean, you look at it, it's only three inch, three inches or two to three inches of asphalt, that ain't much. And it, you start destroying that and all of a sudden your driveway, you're, I'm not gonna fix it and all of a sudden all the neighbors are mad because your driveway looks like hell. And it makes the neighborhood look gringy. If there isn't a complaint from the neighbors, it isn't impeding in, in the street or the sidewalk, I don't care.
But what about say someone that has a, like a, a big boom truck that they say they work for Caterpillar and their truck is over sixteen thousand, are they gonna have to quit their job? I mean, you can't, that, that seems kinda crazy to me, I mean, there's.
But that's the way it's, it's been, since we've changed, we increased it to fifteen thousand pounds, we did.
And we used to not allow the commercial vehicles at all.
And that basically is a tandem axle dump truck, that's empty.
Travis, do you wanna come up and kinda tell us the situation you're? Well, yeah, sure, yeah.
Yeah, like a school bus driver even.
Just need you to come up and state your name and address there and kinda just give us a little backstory here, I guess, of what you're dealing with.
And did you say it was twenty-nine thousand, not twenty-six, how many?
Twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Yep.
That's the gross vehicle weight rating?
That's, yep.
Okay.
Which is all it's ever gonna be in a driveway.
Josie, what you're talking about is axle weight, I mean.
Right, so for the street, the health of the street, if we care about not replacing our streets too often, going with our current plan of, it's a very expensive infrastructure cost to the city. So at twenty-six thousand pounds, which is what I, sorry, I thought it was, um, that's thirteen thousand ton with two axles, that's six and a half ton per axle. You're already, you're under that seven ton, but you might have some issues, so maybe we wanna do an exception for a passenger bus because we know, I mean, collectively, we know when he takes it home, it's not filled with kids. But you wouldn't be able to say that for the dump truck without P D getting inside to look in it, to enforce it, but we know the bus doesn't take kids home. So I would say that you can make an easy exception for that, but the rest are gonna be twenty-six thousand pounds or less to meet that, the health of the road.
And we did see other cities when we were doing our research that did allow passenger vehicles that were over a certain weight and not other trucks.
Like another example would be, um, like the, the transit buses, maybe they wanna take them home, again, they're rated with passengers, we know when they're taking them home, they don't have passengers with them. Like the, I can't think, Northland Express, whatever it used to be called.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm Christopher Ward, address one one zero nine Flintwood Street Southwest. Um, I drive twenty-five minutes one direction to go drive that school bus. And the school company said that I was allowed to take that vehicle, bring it home and park it as long as it's in the driveway. It does fit fully in the driveway with a couple of feet to spare at the end of it, so it's not in the road. Bus drivers don't make a lot of money, I know they make more here than they do where I currently work, so here it's twenty-six dollars an hour. Where I work for, it's nineteen dollars an hour. It just helps save me with a headache cause I have a lot of stuff going on in my life right now, but, uh, it was fine from the beginning of the school year until like month and a half. Thanksgiving, and then all of a sudden it became a problem. And that's when the complaint came in and I, we got the note, notice in the mail and, and that's when we came to you guys, so.
Well, yes, I mean, that's, that's why I brought it up, yeah, I mean.
Maybe one of his neighbors complained cause.
Yeah, right.
See it parked driveway next door.
I mean, that's.
He was always cleaning up until that day or until, you know, like a week before that, cause weather started changing.
Or maybe.
That could be part of it, I don't know, they normally cleaned, but.
He doesn't do that with his business vehicle, cause he knows it's not allowed.
He doesn't have any, but yeah.
And he sees you doing it and.
Maybe.
You know, who knows?
I mean, again, I mean, I guess it comes down to like, like what Steve says, you live in town, so you live next to neighbors, so you're, you're gonna have neighbors that do things that you don't like and necessarily, I mean, it's a guy's job, you know, it's.
So mayor and council, we are, um, at the time for planning commission start, so I recommend that we, um, end and adjourn our committee of the whole meeting. Um, I do have questions within that memo of things to consider and if you wanted to give that more thought or if there's anything that you want me to further look into, if you could, um, maybe send me an email and then I'll bring that back for committee of the whole for more discussion at the next meeting.
I, I think it's, I think it's a very valid point what he has, I'm not disagreeing with you Luke, I just want people to understand, you're gonna have somebody that's gonna complain about something. And I, I have no problem with him having that, but, and you also gotta remember, you got neighbors, they're gonna complain about something. I personally don't complain about what my neighbors do, I don't care. That's just me personally, but I have, we, every one of us sitting up here has to take that in consideration. Because you're one person versus ten, you know, type of thing. So I have no problem into it, I think we should just do a little more research on it, put his notification on hold so that he doesn't have to deal with it right now. And I think we can bring it up, I, I, matter of fact, I think we can bring this up into a future council meeting, we don't have to bring it back in front of Cal. We can have that conversation at that time and then we can act on it at that time.
Yeah.
Are you in favor of that, Dan?
I don't know if we have to post though for that or.
Uh, we can bring it up for discussion at a council meeting, but yeah, I would have to post it before taking action, so I would need more clarification on, the bus I think we're all fine with is what I'm hearing. So however, do you want me just to draft language to make it fine for, um, passenger vehicles that we know would be empty when they come home? Or do you wanna allow all those, the list of items that I brought up or some or not others?
I would, I almost could say if it fits in the driveway, you know, I mean, as long as it's not parked on the street, what do you, what do you really care, you know?
I think we're gonna need.
You get somebody that comes in with a rendering truck and ninety degrees outside and it's full, I think everybody's gonna complain about that.
And then they gotta run it all night long.
Yeah, that's true.
So perhaps what I'll do is I'll draft language on the requirement of the street. And then people can decide for themselves whatever they wanna bring up to that point and you can take that into consideration, um, at an upcoming meeting.
All right, that sounds good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from councilman Lundine and a second from councilman Collison, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion to adjourn carries four zero.
You gotta give me one minute, I gotta go get rid of some coffee. If this were.